Director Elliott's drawing her back. I was, I never did find panel also, I don't know how.
The process is.
Thank you Chair, I think we're ready to go.
Okay, well then we'll start. Good afternoon, I'll call this meeting to be the whole to order. And acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of Palominia. Um, directors, you have the uh agenda uh in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, Director, I think that was Elliot and Director Paul, and I would ask city directors.
Corporate officer has her hand up.
Oh, okay.
Through the chair, um, just for the motion, um, eleven point one, they proposed closed session. Uh, we just need to amend the motion slightly to strike out C labor relations or other employee relations.
Thank you. So the agenda as amended, um, is there a mover for that agenda as many? Director Paul and Director Brander, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Adoption of the minutes of May third, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing no hands, a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
Director Paul and Director Brander, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Cherry. Okay, we have one delegation registered, uh Jesse Coughlin. Uh, from Selkirk Mountain Forest Reserve and Kathy Brown and Dean McDonald. From Texada Island Nonprofit Seniors Housing Society. So welcome Jesse and Kathy. Um, you have ten minutes for your presentation and I would invite you to begin.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Are you there?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. First of all, I would like to thank the committee of the hall and the Q R D for considering this important social initiative. Uh, Kathy Brown is representing the Texada Island Not-for-Profit Seniors Housing Society and. I am Jesse Copeland representing Selkirk Mountain Forest Limited on Texada. Um, there should be agenda items that were shared with the committee, um. The letters from Selkirk and a letter of support from the. Uh, Texada Island Nonprofit Seniors Housing Society.
Yeah, we have those.
Yeah, and uh that with within those items, the the nature and scope of this proposal are outlined. I'd like to brief the committee on Selkirk's background, uh, which is kind of a short history, um. The company that became Selkirk Mountain Forest, uh, back in twenty seventeen was established on Texada. Going back to nineteen seventy seven as a managed forest company. Um, currently Selkirk directly and indirectly provides nine full-time jobs as well as many other employment and economic spinoffs. Supporting the local community economically and socially is a company commitment that spends. The forty-five plus year tenure on Texada. Uh, there's, there are a few significant projects have mentioned that Selkirk's been involved in in the past. Um, notably, uh, donation of the land for the current Gillies Bay. Volunteer Fire Department Hall, uh, which also houses the Gillies Bay Improvement District Office. There was also the establishment of a commercial building and uh that housed the restaurant, uh, lodging and the forestry office and. And the most significant initiative to date is. The is working with the Texada Island Nonprofit Seniors Housing Society and aiding the project in the acquisition of. Of land. Initially, uh, yeah, so that's kind of the history and then. Just kind of a little bit about the project from Selkirk's as perspective, uh. Initially, the seniors housing society. Approach Selkirk regarding potentially purchasing land to establish a housing project on Texada. And based on the requirements and objectives outlined by the housing society. The proposed lot or the lot being proposed and offered for the project. Uh, has been selected due to the geographic location and its proximity to utilities, public services and infrastructure. Uh, the company's owners are committed to contributing to the project and the potential social economic. Benefits that would result from having this as part of the Texada community. Based on the preliminary findings, um, it has been recommended to apply to the agricultural land commission for an A L R exemption. In order to subdivide the lot which is outlined in the letter and uh the map that was shared. The the long and short of this really is that the presentation is being made to the regional district. And is a request for support in the A L R exemption process and subdivision of this. Parcel land which is a a small piece of land, uh, which is attached to a larger. Lot, um, and that that is uh what I have to contribute and uh. I thank everyone for their time and uh I would like to invite Kathy to join into the meeting. Uh, and uh, share uh her perspective from the seniors housing society. Thank you.
You're muted Kathy.
Sorry about that, you think I have that figured out by now. Um, thank you very much Jesse for that. And I thank again the committee of the whole for ho- hosting us tonight. Um, I have a huge list, but I'm not going to go through it all. Uh, I kind of boil it down to. Tinches has been uh active for four years. Uh, in that time we've um acquired our charitable status through Reverend of Canada. And in four years we vetted fourteen properties. They've been unsuitable for variety of reasons of being outside of the improvement districts and fire protection. Too steep, too small. Uh, not serviced by water at all, a little bit of nimbyism. And uh some were sold out from underneath us. So when connected up to Selkirk. Uh, has given us a huge wave of hope. Um, it is the absolute best location being directly behind the Gillies Bay, the Texada Clinic. Um, close to all the amenities as Jesse said. Um, I'd like to remind the uh committee the whole that you've. Have have supported us in the past with the social planning grant, seed funding grant at the start. We have also received new um support from Powell River Foundation, Plan H, B C Healthy Committees. Canadian Housing Transformation Center and from the local first credit union in the form of grants, educational sponsorships and our first strategic plan. For so many reasons, this is the property. Uh, I cannot say enough, the location, the topography, the ease to build. Um, and the generosity of one of our local industries. Supporting and giving back to our community, uh, all the way around. I think it goes for a lot of. Uh, warm feelings in the community and it'll service generations to come. I ask you support. Selkirk Mountain Forest's application for exclusion from the L R. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy and thank you Jesse. And I was remiss in not apologizing at the beginning for the delay in our meeting start. We had a mammoth. Finance committee meeting just before this, so I apologize for that. Um, I'll open it up then to directors for any questions. And uh, I'm not seeing any hands. So I have a quick question.
Director Gisborne has a hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Director Gisborne.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent on uh up to speed on the whole A L R A L C. Application process, but I do know a little bit about how it's happened in the past. Um, my understanding is it has historically gone before the regional districts agricultural advisory committee. And then it goes before the regional districts planning committee and then it goes before the board. Prior to being submitted to the agricultural land commission. So my question uh to the delegates is. Is that the process that you're looking to pursue? Uh, you know, going before the agricultural advisory committee and the planning committee? Or are you hoping to come to the committee of the whole and and maybe fast track that process? I'm just kind of. Um, wondering about the process and I also see our uh manager of planning services has uh got her camera on, so maybe she can also help. So, thank you.
Thank you, and maybe I'll direct that question to Ms. Rodden, um, because you have the overview overarching view of all this. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you, uh, through the chair. I I believe that uh. An A L R exclusion application is something that uh that this regional district has never uh dealt with before. And uh I have been um. Speaking with Jesse Copeland and Kathy Brown and a couple of others, uh, people from Texada about this initiative. And had uh preliminary conversations with the agricultural land commission, so um. I I think the commission would be favorable uh of an application of this sort, given the size is just five hectares. It's adjacency to the community and the fact that it would be a social housing initiative for seniors. Um. But I think what the what the delegates are seeking is uh support. In principle for the application. And my suggestion is that it might be in order um to direct staff or report on the A L R exclusion process. And and then it would go through the channels um that Director Gisborne has just. Outlined, go through the Ag Advisory Committee and Planning Committee.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodden. Um, am I seeing any other hands raised? Is that Director?
Director Dowd.
That's mine. Director Dowd would be the guy who had. Flag waving. And uh. The the letter from Selkirk, good one, thank you for that, I'm saying, I appreciate the making the land available, that's a good thing. My my own impression would be that usually the landowner that makes an application to the agricultural land commission. For a change in the status of the piece of property and that's a reasonable thing to do. If a a landowner makes that request, then they would. They could then send a copy of that request to the planning committee or the agricultural advisory committee, but let's just say. To the regional district and then we would make it go through the proper process to get that letter of support. Uh, then. Like to talk about that, just trying to going through those steps. And having the landowner apply for the removal from the agricultural land commission. And coming to the regional district and asking for a letter of support might be quicker. Uh, than asking for a staff report and then after we get the staff report, asking for the same thing.
Hey, thank you. Um, I'll refer to Ms. Rodden first, and I see your hand, Mr. Copeland.
Through the chair, uh, that that is the the previous process with the A L C was that the landowner could make application. However, the legislation changed several years ago. And now only a local government or a First Nation government um can apply for exclusion. And so I think the delegates are asking for the regional district to work with them to submit. Um, an application for exclusion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Copeland, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I I wanted to elaborate on uh what Laura Rodden uh just. Explained, uh, essentially, yeah, the the change in the process and and uh. The requirement of it to actually go through local government, uh, and have local government to actually initiate and uh. And and put forth the application to the agricultural land commission. Um, and that is the whole point of the presentation is to hopefully gain the support of. The regional district and uh the committee in this process.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions from directors? Okay, seeing no hands, um. Am I missing a hand? Sorry, I.
Yeah, I I thought I saw Director Elliott put her hand up, um, but he doesn't, I have one more, if. You have your first turn to speak, uh, did you wish to speak?
My thought was to put a motion for staff direction to come back to initiate this. Process because I don't see anywhere else we would put that motion. And it looks like that's what the delegates asking for, so if we had a secondary, we could do.
I'll second.
Okay, so you're directing staff for a report on the exclusion, is that correct?
Yeah, as Ms. Rodden suggested, that we do, I think that would initiate the process, yeah.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Director Gisborne. Discussion on the motion. Director Paul.
Unmute myself. Uh, thank you, I I support this, I think it's a good, a good process, I know it can. Take time to go through this process and I think it'll take time on our end and it'll it'll take more time on the A L C end. But I think for us to do it properly, the the stronger our processes, the more likely the. The it'll be successful if the board ultimately supports this and and personally, I I see the, when I look at the map, the the area proposed. Um, looks, it makes sense, it's right next to Gillies Bay. It looks like it's using geographic boundaries on the forested side. Uh, and roads and other other logical boundaries and uh it's not that big, so I would hope. That the A L C would uh would support that, but uh I think going through the process makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it is a really good location in that it's um very close to the clinic. And also across from the community hall, so events to take place there, of course, would have easy access for residents of that facility. So is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing no hands, I'll call for the question.
Director McCormick?
Yes, sorry, Director Gisborne.
Oh, sorry, I know it must be a little challenging on the screens, um. There there's two things, uh, one, taking a look at the map that's uh provided by the delegates. Uh, the property in in question, five point two hectares between Airpoint Road and Gillies Bay Road is yes in the A L R. But looking east, um, there's a little creek that goes down into Gillies Bay. And it looks like on the east end of that creek, the A L R stops. But that also appears to be part of uh Selkirk property as well. So I'm wondering, you know, from the delegates. It looks like Selkirk Properties has land that's not in the A L R. That is also close to, I think it's like there's the senior center, the school that's down there, and I'm just wondering. Would the lands that aren't in the A L R potentially be more suitable because, you know. Jumping through all the agricultural land reserve hoops could. Well, it could really slow down a project and you might not even get a yes. So I'm just curious. Uh, has the other Selkirk properties that aren't in the A L R been considered?
Mr. Copeland?
Uh, the entirety of the land uh owned by Selkirk Mountain Forest surrounding Gillies Bay is within the A L R. Uh, yeah, and uh there has been a fair amount of uh research put into this and and uh. Based on uh feedback from the representative, I can't remember the name at the moment, from the agricultural land commission, uh. And the size of the the piece of property, um, the. The aspect of the land as well, not necessarily being very suitable for agriculture. Uh, in many ways, it isn't very suitable for agriculture and uh and. The nature and scope of the the project, uh, it was suggested that. There was quite a high likeliness of this to go through, not for a an agricultural. Uh, land reserve removal, um, which is a different process, but for an exclusion, which is actually um not. Necessarily something that is is done a lot, but based on the the project, uh. It sounded like it would be a relatively um likely scenario to to happen and uh. And essentially with an exclusion too, there's a lot less, uh. I think involved in the process as to having like a a removal done. So uh, um, in saying that, I I believe that uh. Yeah, there there's, it's very high likelihood this this would be uh accepted and and uh moved through.
Thank you, yeah, and it's encouraging in that Tinches is proposing to include a community garden and a nature trail. Um, you know, talking about the various um forestry aspects of the island, I think is is really great, so hopefully that will aid in the application process.
Yeah, Kathy Brown has her hand up.
Yep, there you go.
I just, I just wanted to speak to the honorable committee member. About the other properties which he has identified with the creek area. Um, including the area where the fire hall is, which was previously donated, it's all floodplain area. And it would be difficult to build on, would require much. Much more involved construction, we'd have much more restrictions, we did look at that, it is one of our vetted properties. As well as the creek area that goes up. Um, a little bit further behind uh the the old restaurant, so those were looked at, but. Because of the difficulty in construction, they were discarded.
That'll be, uh, thank you, that answers uh my first question, and I guess the second question would be for staff. Um, if this motion passes, I presume that all of this will go before the agricultural advisory committee. For consideration from our community volunteers and experts, is is that correct?
Ms. Rod. You're muted. You're muting, Ms. Rod.
I'm sorry, through the chair, uh, yes, that that's correct.
Okay, um, if that's the case, then I'll support the resolution because I would like to hear. Uh, the input from the agricultural advisory committee and have all the information, so uh. That's all, that's all my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members? Seeing no hands up, we will call for the vote on the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much Kathy and Jesse for your presentation, and once again, I'm sorry for the delay.
Have a great day, thanks everyone.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no unfinished business, we have two items of correspondence under six point one, is there in and six point two? Is there any business arising from those items? Seeing no hands.
Seven point one.
We'll move on to seven point one, um, which is correspondence from Terre-Lébit regarding uh the camping sites for skim jam. There is a recommendation before you, is there a mover for this recommendation? I'm staring death. And Director Paul, thank you, and Director. Director Dowd, okay, thank you, we've been seconded, discussion. Okay, seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Cherry. Uh, reports, eight point one, the solid waste management plan implementation update. And directors, you have a recommendation before you?
Recommendation.
Director Brander and Director Gisborne, discussion. Seeing no hands, we'll call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Cherry. Item eight point two, the U B C M convention attendance and meetings with the premier cabinet ministers. You have the recommendation before you, which is about attendance, uh, is there a mover for this recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
All Director Gisborne, thank you, discussion. Director Paul.
I just, uh, just a clarification, maybe staff can help me, the uh deadline for um meetings with 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 uh. With 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 the, sorry, with with cabinet ministers is in August, right? So I think we should probably really try to do this by July, is there any reason to do it earlier? It's like, when when do we, like, do we miss spaces if we go too late?
We.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, um.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, um. I believe there are two deadlines, um, so the meetings with cabinet ministers and premier, um, the deadline is end of June. Um, so we would have to decide at the June board meeting. Um, there are need requests that that. Request with staff members, um, and that deadline is in August.
Sorry, I was just going to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We'll need, if you do want to schedule min- minister meetings, we'll need. A motion to ratify at the board level. In our experience that if we can get the meeting early, we'd be more successful in the past and getting on the schedule.
Okay, thank you. So the recommendation before us is for attendance, so I think we should deal with this recommendation first. And then um, open it up for discussion regarding uh, meetings with cabinet ministers. So is there anything further on the motion to attend the meeting, the UBCM? Seeing no hands, we'll vote. Oh, sorry. It's really hard to see in the boardroom. Director Elliot, sorry.
Thank you, uh, Chair McCormick. So the motion is actually for both. It's attendance and meetings with premier and cabinet ministers. So I just wanted to clarify, is this asking. For us to put that forward today in this meeting or just that uh, we do it all the, like, what does this motion mean?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, so this motion that's currently on the floor is simply for registration. Um, if directors would like to request a meeting with ministers or the premier or staff, um, we would require separate motions to do that.
Okay, so let's deal with this motion first regarding attendance, and then we'll open it up to subsequent motions regarding um, meetings after that. Director Dow?
I would propose that we deal with this motion, which is all about attendance at the UBCM convention. And that we. Could submit requests for meetings with ministers to the staff before their our next board meeting. So that it can be ratified at the next board meeting, which would meet our goal and. Talk about a mechanism, I'm saying, if you want to meet with a minister. Email staff that they can create a list for approval at our next board meeting.
Okay, good point. To the C O, is there, um, should we include that as an amendment to the motion? Or would you rather have that as a separate motion?
Uh, sorry, thank you, Chair. I think that the what Director Dow proposed will work for staff. I was. Incorrect, we don't need a ratification because the deadline's after our next board meeting. So if you uh, provide us with. Emails, we can present that at the board meeting and you guys can approve it. Uh, so we can send out a little form about what we kind of need from directors. Um, and then you could just reply back to that email that we send out to you, um. But we won't need direction to do that. We'll just send the email, um, and then, um, if you. And then we'll present whatever you you submit to us to the board at the board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
That process works.
That's right. That makes a lot of sense. Um, any further discussion? Okay, now I'm really not seeing any further hands. So we will vote on the motion that is in the agenda. All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Carry. And so directors, you have um, an understanding now of how to, um. You know, request meetings with cabinet ministers, and we will wait from that for that email to come forward for us to respond to. So. We will move on to item eight point three, the community emergency preparedness fund, extreme. So we're seconded by. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Uh, so now. We are now on to new business. There's no new business. Question period. Questions from. Press or public?
Uh, hello, Chair. Glitch me from the peak here. I don't have any questions this afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Paul. So we will now move on to the in-camera session. And you have um, a proposed closed session motion in front of you with the exclusion of the labor relations. Part there, so is there a mover for this recommendation?
Yep, I move that the committee move in camera and that the meeting be closed to the public on the grounds that the subject matter to be considered relates to matters covered by the community charter under section ninety-one. I, the receipt of advice, it is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. K negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a regional district service that are. At their preliminary stages and that in the view of the committee could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the regional district if we hold in public. And and the consideration of whether a committee meeting should be closed under provision of this subsection or subsection two.
Thank you, seconded by.
Director Elliott.
Director Elliott, thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? We're going in camera. Thanks very much. (Music)